All right, it's 10 o'clock and at this time I'll call to order the Pike County Fiscal Court for a special meeting of March 23rd, 2020. And at this time, I'd like to ask Brian Booth if he would say the invocation for us.
Lord, welcome forward. May I call the Rock? Madam Roberts.
Amen. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Judge Jones.
Present.
Commissioner Robertson.
Here.
Commissioner Tackett.
Here.
Commissioner Booth.
Here.
We have a quorum and we are ready to proceed. At this time, I'd like to ask Commissioner Jason Tackett to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with every justice and honor.
Thank you, gentlemen. The next item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes from the court meetings of February 18, 2020, and March 3rd, 2020. Is there a motion?
Motion.
A motion by Commissioner Booth is their second?
Second.
It was second by Commissioner Robertson. Any question or discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Robertson.
Yes.
Commissioner Tackett.
Yes.
Commissioner Booth.
Yes.
Judge Jones.
Yes. Before we go on into this agenda, we had thought about canceling this meeting. We had previously scheduled this special meeting because we had some folks that were supposed to be out of town on county business. Of course, that trip was canceled due to the COVID-19 epidemic. I want to just talk about a couple of things before we get into the heart of the agenda. There are a lot of people who are worried right now, who are concerned over the state of the economy, who are concerned over the pandemic with the novel coronavirus. They're worried about their family, they're worried about their loved ones. And as you can see here in the courtroom, we are maintaining social distancing. We are making sure that we have numbers that are not exceeding that, which has been recommended by the CDC, the Center for Disease Control and Prevention. We are doing everything we can with the situation at hand to continue to provide county's government services. Our staff is still working, the courthouse is open, we have the sheriff's office open, the PVA is open. We have restricted access to the courthouse because we certainly want to be able to, if this virus does make it into eastern Kentucky, we want to be able to continue to provide services. It's vitally important that we continue to operate county government. As many of you have seen or received a call, we are starting a new solid waste collection cycle or schedule today. Today will be basically the Pikeville area, Allen Creek, and most of those folks already had Monday pickup. I'm on Allen Creek, we already had Monday pickup. Some of you who are watching this from home may have been getting calls. They were redundant, I know we received several at my house. Part of those are from the Rave Alert system. It's very important that if you have not signed up for the Rave Alert system, it's free, it doesn't cost anything, but you can go to smart911.com or you can go to the Pike County Emergency Management Facebook page and there's a little icon there that says "Use App," it's blue. If you click on that, it'll walk you right through the registration process and that will also give you weather warnings, it will give you any notification that comes out from our emergency management office. I want to particularly thank Deputy Judge Reggie Hickman and also Chuck Morley and Stephanie Cleavage are in the Solid Waste Department. When we lost the inmate labor program, I think some of you may have seen last week that we announced that the inmate labor program was suspended by the Department of Corrections. They certainly don't want inmates out exposed to COVID-19 and then bringing it back into the jail. We have talked in the past about the inmate labor program and it saves this county somewhere around a million and a half dollars every year in labor. If we had to replace the inmate labor with employees, it would cost the county about a million and a half dollars that we absolutely don't have. And unfortunately, because we do not have access to inmate labor, we're having to completely change the way we operate the solid waste system. We believe that in the long term, it will work better. There's going to be some glitches. I promise you, it's not going to flow smoothly at first, I promise you that we'll get the bugs worked out, we'll get the kinks worked out, and we'll make it work. I want to thank all the men in solid waste out on the trucks. They're stepping up, they understand that we're operating under a state of emergency. And I want the people out there to remember that the folks who work in their solid waste program, do they make mistakes? Absolutely. We are working on some technology that's going to make it easier for them to do their job, it's going to help prevent missed pickups. But I want you to think about these folks who are out here on these trucks. They're out here, it's raining today, doesn't matter how cold it is, doesn't matter what the weather's like, it doesn't matter how hot it is. And you think about how hard that job is, they're dealing with other people's garbage all day long. It smells, they're dealing with things that may be contagious, they're dealing with everything from human waste, animal waste, you know, decaying food. It's a hard job. And I would just ask some people out here in Pike County who are served by Pike County Solid Waste to, if you see one of these garbage truck drivers, say thank you to them because they absolutely are stepping up and helping us make sure that we address the solid waste problem. The solid waste issue, we have to continue to pick the garbage up because that would be a public health hazard in and of itself if we stopped running solid waste. I would also, I would also ask you, if you could, to make sure that you take your trash down to the public road. Some people may not be able to do that because they're handicapped, they have a disability, but our ordinance plainly states that the trash needs to be put beside the county road or the state road, whatever the case may be. In the past, solid waste employees were able to go on private driveways. We've sort of had to curtail that because of the lack of manpower, but also we've had instances where these garbage trucks are heavy and they've damaged driveways and bridges and we can't afford to repair that kind of damage. So please, please do your best to get the garbage out timely and as close to the road as possible. Also, please keep in mind that you're going to have truck drivers running routes this week that they have never ran before. They're not going to necessarily be familiar and there will probably be some missed pickups. If there is a problem, the solid waste number is 432-6245. If you have always put your garbage out under your shed or beside your porch or something like that, these men may not know that, they may not be familiar with the route, so it's again, important that it be put out beside the roadway. Friend of mine called me yesterday, messaged me yesterday and brought another issue to my attention. You know, we're almost to the first of the month, we have a lot of people who are on government assistance, who are on disability, and if you, in order to prevent a large congregation of people in our grocery stores, if you're able to go ahead and do your grocery shopping today or tomorrow, Wednesday, it would be helpful. So that way, when people do receive their income checks at the end of the week, that we're not going to have a large number of people, it would help reduce the number of people in the grocery stores. Most of you may know that Governor Beshear has issued an executive order that closes all retail stores that are open to the public, other than food stores, pharmacies, gun stores or stores that sell guns and ammunition. And I know that this has inconvenienced a lot of people, I know it's caused substantial financial harm to a lot of businesses, but the more compliant we are, the earlier that we can put this epidemic or pandemic behind us and move forward. There are people who are still not adhering to the CDC recommendations, they're not adhering to what President Trump says, they're not adhering to what Governor Beshear says. And we would encourage people to do that because the less compliance we have, the more stringent these restrictions are going to be. We have a lot of work to do to get the economy back on its feet and the longer that we go with this shutdown, the more painful that's going to be. I may have a few other things to address here momentarily. I'm going to move through this agenda really quick. We may skip over some of this information or some of the items on the agenda so that we can conclude the meeting as soon as possible. The first item is to acknowledge receipt of the Pike County Conservation District July 1st, 2018 to June 30th, 2019 budget. Actually, that should be, that's a mistake. I would think that that would be the 2020 budget to the 2021 budget. Is there a motion to acknowledge receipt of the Pike County Conservation District budget for the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2021?
Motion.
A motion by Commissioner Tackett, is her second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Robertson. Any question or discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Robertson.
Here.
Commissioner Tackett.
Yes.
Commissioner Booth.
Yes.
Judge Jones.
Yes. The next item is to acknowledge receipt of the audit of the Pike County Sheriff's Settlement 2018 taxes for the period of May 1st, 2018 through April 30th, 2019. Is there a motion?
Motion.
A motion by Commissioner Tackett, is her second?
Second.
With second by Commissioner Booth. Any questions or discussions? Those are correct. Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Robertson.
Yes.
Commissioner Tackett.
Yes.
Commissioner Booth.
Yes.
Judge Jones.
Yes. Next item is acknowledge receipt of the audit of the Pike County Sheriff's Settlement 2018 for gas and oil taxes for the period of May 19, 2018 through July 15, 2019. Is there a motion? A motion by Commissioner Booth, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Robertson. Any questions or discussions? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Robertson.
Yes.
Commissioner Tackett.
Yes.
Commissioner Booth.
Yes.
Judge Jones.
Yes. Next item on the agenda is acknowledge receipt of the audit of the Pike County Fiscal Court for the year ended June 30th, 2019. Frankie, would you just up to date or bring us up to date on the findings of the audit and the comments, how those were addressed?
Judge, there were three comments in the audit. Two were related to the fiscal court and one was related to the jail. The two related to the fiscal court both had to deal with debt and how it was booked in the financial statements. One comment was about the original budget had the debt booked into the operating revenue and not to the debt revenue items. When I became aware of that, I transferred all those, created new line items and transferred that money and those payments to where it should have been, but the comment was it wasn't booked right in the original budget. And the second comment was, once I transferred that money over into the debt-related items, it exceeded the budget appropriated for those items, for that category. So that's been corrected, both of those going forward. The debt's been budgeted and booked properly in the debt-related items since that point. And the jail has also said that they've corrected their bank reconciliation comment on the jail commissary account. So all three comments have been resolved going forward. There's a drastic improvement over last year's comments in the audit when there were 13 comments. So anybody got any questions?
It couldn't get much worse. Frankie, on behalf of the fiscal court and the people of the county, I want to thank you for the work that you've done to clean up the mess that you inherited, similar to the mess that we walked into. And the people owe you a tremendous debt of gratitude and it's much appreciated. Thank you very much. Is there a motion to acknowledge receipt of the audit of the Pike County Fiscal Court for the year ended June 30th, 2019?
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Robertson, is her second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Booth. Is there any question or discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Robertson.
Yes.
Commissioner Tackett.
Yes.
Commissioner Booth.
Yes.
Judge Jones.
Yes. Next item is adoption of a resolution in support of the 2021, 2020, 2021 Kentucky Recycled Grant and Authorization for the Judge Executive to Execute All Documents. Is there a motion?
Motion.
A motion by Commissioner Booth, is her second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Robertson. Any question or discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Robertson.
Yes.
Commissioner Tackett.
Yes.
Commissioner Booth.
Yes.
Judge Jones.
Yes. The next item is a first reading of a proposed ordinance amending the Pike County Administrative Code, Section 472, relating to layoffs of hourly employees. Mr. King, would you like to read, give us the first reading from the podium there and explain that for us?
This is an amendment to Section 472, layoffs under Section 3 Subsection A. The current reading is, "Court shall designate the position and the work unit where the reduction is to be made. Excised from that provision will be the language. In the positions remaining, the court shall retain the most senior qualified employee." Section 3 Subsection C would be excised, which is, "The laid off employees shall be kept on a recall list for a period of one year." And Section 3 Subsection D in its entirety, which currently reads, "When a job opening occurs for an hourly position with the court that is not filled by the job bidding procedure, the most senior qualified person on the recall list shall be notified of the availability of the position. If the person notified of the availability of the position that they are otherwise qualified to perform and they refuse to accept reemployment in that position, that employee shall be removed from the recall list. If the laid off employee accepts the position, then the court shall award the position to that person. That is to be excised under the amendment."
Right, thank you, sir. There's no vote necessary at this time, it will be on the agenda to be acted on at the next court meeting. This is part of my efforts to modernize and streamline the administrative code for the Pike County Fiscal Court. We made substantial changes when the court came in and we're going to continue to clean up the code where we see it necessary to do so. Mr. King, why don't you just briefly give us a, let's just skip over the next item with regard to the golf course litigation. We do not have a proposed settlement agreement with us at this time, so we'll move over through, no objection to that. All right, the next item is a warning of bids. Will somebody grab Mr. Fannin, please? While we're doing this, there was one other issue I wanted to bring up with regard to the pandemic. My wife, as some of you know, is a family physician and asked me to bring this to everyone's attention. Two things she wanted me to bring up. One is there is a misconception among younger people that they're immune to this, that they're not going to get sick. There is a misconception that this only affects older, older people who have some kind of prior health problem. This morning on the news, there's a 12-year-old child in Atlanta on a ventilator, no prior health problems. No one knows how the child caught it. 45-year-old congressman from Utah was admitted to the hospital. What we don't know is who's really going to get sick from this and who's going to have mild symptoms. And the one thing that we want is to make sure that even, you know, some people apparently are not even getting sick from this, but they're carrying it and spreading it. And as some of you saw yesterday, US Senator Rand Paul, Kentucky's junior senator, was diagnosed. Apparently is asymptomatic, but the concern is how easily this stuff is transmitted. The other is, again, people are not taking this seriously and they're comparing, you see people on Facebook who are comparing this to the flu. You know, the flu's killed this many people and, you know, why are we taking such drastic steps? Well, this disease is, we have no immunity for it and as Dr. Foddy said at the press conference last week, it is a misconception to think that, you know, where it's, it's a false argument when people are trying to say, well, the flu is worse than this. We've had nearly 500 people die in the United States and this thing is just getting started. If we don't get this under control, the death toll will clearly, clearly dwarf that from the flu. So we've got to continue to work together on this. We are going to be having another press conference probably next week to bring Dr. Foddy and Tammy Rogers from the Health Department back in to give updates. We also did ask Doug Tackett to give, to contact all the food stores, grocery stores in the county, the major ones, and right now, there's no supply problems they're able to get goods into their stores. So please, please do not try to hoard and buy up everything. You know, stuff's still coming in, the trucks are still running, so all you're doing is preventing people from getting what they may absolutely need. So with that being said, Mr. Fannin, we have a bid opening, sir?
Yes, thank you. We had a bid opening March 11th for our annual March bids. This is kind of lengthy, I'll try to get through it as quick as possible. There are bids 03, 2020 through 16, 2020. Bid 03, 2020 is for building material. We had, one bid was received, it was from J.D. Westcott of South Williamson. My recommendation is that we award the bid to J.D. Westcott &amp; Son. Bid 04, 2020 is for corrugated metal and HDPE plastic drain pipe. There were two bids received, it was from J.D. Westcott of South Williamson and MGC Supply of Pikeville. My recommendation is that we award the bid to both J.D. Westcott and MGC Supply. Bid 05, 2020 is for glass and glass-related products. Two bids were received. Customer Glass &amp; Carpet of Belfry, Kentucky and Elliott Supply and Glass of Pikeville, Kentucky. My recommendation is that we award the bid to both Customer Glass and Elliott Supply. Bid 06, 2020 is for limestone gravel delivered. There was one bid received, it was from Mountain Aggregate from Lexington, Kentucky. It's my recommendation that we award that bid to Mountain Aggregate. 07, 2020, limestone gravel picked up. We received three bids. Mountain Aggregate of Lexington, Mountain Enterprise of Lexington, and MGC Supply of Pikeville. It's my recommendation that we award the bid to all the above-listed vendors. Bid 08, 2020 is for plumbing and electrical supplies. Seven bids were received. Elliott Supply of Pikeville, J.D. Westcott of South Williamson, Justice Supply of Shelbyana, Marlin Manufacturing of Orlando, Florida, State Electric of Pikeville, Thompson Hardware of Zebulon, and Tri-County Auto Parts of Kemper. My recommendation is that we award the bid to all the above-listed vendors. Bid 09, 2020 is for portable toilets. There was one bid received, it was Busy Bee Portable Toilets of Raccoon. It's my recommendation that we award the bid to Busy Bee Portable Toilets. Bid 10-2020 is for printing. Two bids were received. C&amp;R Office Supply of Pikeville and Chapman Printing of Huntington, West Virginia. It's my recommendation that we award the bid to both C&amp;R Office Supply and Chapman Printing. Bid number 11-2020, tires and tubes. Two bids were received. Gibson Tire of Ival, Kentucky and Parsley Tire of London, Kentucky. My recommendation is that we award the bid to both Gibson Tire and Parsley Tire. Bid number 12, 2020 is for sodium chloride or road salt delivered and picked up. There were four bids received. Morton Salt from Chicago, Illinois, Cargill Incorporated from North Olmsted, Ohio, Compass Mineral from Overland Park, Kansas, and Detroit Salt from Detroit, Michigan. My recommendation is that we award the bid to Cargill Incorporated. Bid number 13, 2020 is for vehicular parts. There were 11 bids received. A&amp;S Auto Parts of Elkhorn City, Bruce Walters Ford of Pikeville, Carquest of Pikeville, J&amp;A Truck Parts of Raccoon, Leon's Auto Parts of Robinson Creek, Martin's Peter Build of Pikeville, Midstate Equipment of Buchanan, Virginia, S&amp;S Hydraulics of Elkhorn City, Walter Chevrolet of Pikeville, Tri-County Auto Parts of Kemper, and Tri-County Auto Parts of Mouth Card. My recommendation is that we award the bid to all the above-listed vendors. Bid number 14-2020 is for guard rail, there were zero bids received.
Can I interrupt you, Greg? Did we send that, did we send the package to any prospective bidders on that one?
On the guard rail?
Yes.
Yes, we did. I think last year, the contract was with NEET. We may need to rebid that. I think mostly what that was, was used guard rail, we were using for, where we do that drill steel in place, I think that's what we were using it for, we're buying used guard rail to do that with.
Let's rebid that one then.
Bid number 15-2020 is for cleaning supplies, chemicals and related items. One bid was received, it was from BWB Enterprise of Mayewaun, West Virginia. My recommendation is that we award the bid to BWB Enterprise. Bid number 16-2020 is for bulk oil and related items. Three bids were received. Apollo Oil of Winchester, Napa Auto Parts of Whitesburg, and Jones Petroleum of Pikeville. Apollo did not bid on the motor oil, Napa did not bid on the motor oil, Jones Petroleum bid $9.70 per gallon on the 15W-40 Dello. On the AW-32, Apollo Oil bid $4.50. Napa Auto Parts did not bid on the hydraulic oil, and Jones Petroleum bid $4.45. On the DEF fluid, Apollo bid $1.39 per gallon, Napa bid $2.54 a gallon, and Jones bid $1.85 a gallon. After I received these bids, I called these vendors and asked for a product data sheet. I specifically interested in the type of DEF that was bid. The product that Jones Oil bid was the Peak Blue DEF, which is the brand name DEF. The DEF that Apollo bid, which was a lower bid, was a Maverick brand bid, a Maverick brand DEF. I called Durant to maintenance garage and had a little talk with him about quality of DEFs. He said they had had issues in the past if they did not use Peak Blue DEF. He said there's been several situations where they've had to take systems apart, clean and refill because it'll cause the vehicle to go into reduced power mode. Also, if, you know, if that's not taken care of pretty quick and it caused problems to the diesel particulate filters, it could be quite expensive. The only bulk DEF tank that we have is at the recycle center. We use it for the recycle equipment, the landfill equipment and the maintenance garage, our garbage trucks and possibly some of the road trucks while they're at the maintenance garage. We're just using right now about 100 gallons a month through that. So there's about a 40 cent difference between this Peak Blue DEF and this Maverick DEF. So really, on a yearly basis, we're talking about a 500, $400, $500 difference in total cost. If not using the brand name DEF would cause us one issue with one truck, it could possibly cost us more than that to have, to have that truck fixed in itself. So it would be my recommendation that we award the bid to Jones Oil for the Dello motor oil, the AW-30 hydraulic oil, AW-32 hydraulic oil, and the DEF. Those are all the bids that I have for the March bids.
All right. Are there any questions?
What's the brand that Jones sells?
What's the brand that Jones sells?
It's the Peak Blue DEF.
Okay. You know, I don't know. It might hurt us too if we don't use a brand name if we've got warranties still left on the trucks. So, you know, we need to use pretty good stuff on that.
Anything else?
That's it.
Is there a motion to award the bids as set forth by Mr. Fannin? A motion by... Do we need... We don't need to recite those over, do we?
No.
Is there a motion... There is a motion by Commissioner Booth. Is there a second?
Second.
A second by Commissioner Tackett. Any other questions or discussions? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Robertson?
Yes.
Commissioner Tackett?
Yes.
Commissioner Booth?
Yes.
Judge Jones?
Yes.
Thank you, Judge.
Would you please send Mr. Little in?
Yes, sir.
I'll tell you what. While you're doing that, I'm going to go ahead. We have before us the approval of the Pike County Commissioners' Recommended Road Maintenance List. It's in the packet. Is there anything that needs to be added to this? Is there a motion to adopt the road progress report for the upcoming period for work to be performed?
Motion.
A motion by Commissioner Booth. Is there a second?
Second.
A second by Commissioner Tackett. Any other questions or discussions? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Robertson?
Yes.
Commissioner Tackett?
Yes.
Commissioner Booth?
Yes.
Judge Jones?
Yes. Mr. Little, do you have anything for us, sir?
The only thing that I would like to say, Judge, would be like around the 13th, we had that little washout over around Commissioner Booth's area, over around the Williamson area. We done really well. We got that... We got people in and out now, but we're still... We still have issues. So just bear with us on our day-to-day maintenance because we're still dealing with some other issues, installing drains and stuff from that washout.
All right. Thank you very much. That brings us to the next item is Treasurers' Business. Mr. Stacy?
I only had a couple of things, Judge. The first one would be to authorize payment of the expenditure approval list dated March 20th and any other utility and telephone bills received before we run checks, which should be tomorrow.
Looks like the bills were back up again this month.
The only thing I really saw... We had a lot of audit bills in this month, the two for the sheriff and then ours, which was altogether probably about $60,000. Then we have our quarterly... Let's see here, the quarterly property and liability insurance payment, which is like $120,000. That's... That wasn't... Those two weren't on our normal monthly bills. So other than that, those are about the only two I saw that are not recurring.
Looking at these, it looks like, you know, it's interesting that the bill for Worldwide this month was about $5,000 for some of the solid waste trucks. It takes a massive amount of money to run this operation. Judge Hickman, have we taken... Have we gone back and looked at the fuel usage in the last couple of months? So looking here at the water Chevrolet bills for the land... For solid waste this month. I assume that's on the mini packers. Is that would be... Would that be correct? Frankie, that would be the...
Yeah, the county ID numbers, when the middle two numbers are 30s, those are mini packers.
Which middle two numbers?
Like if the county ID number is 33330, the 30 is a... I'm thinking the 30 is a mini packer.
We need to go back and look at these.
Judge, have we about got all of our stuff for the safety equipment?
As far as I know, we have bought all the safety equipment.
So a lot of this won't reoccur?
Which ones are you looking at, Commissioner?
United Central Industrial Supply.
What page is that?
Page 38.
A lot of the high-cost stuff for them won't recur. The safety vest, the eye goggles, things like that. That's like common stuff that we'll probably have to just keep buying, but it's not really expensive. Earplugs, you know, as they use them and lose them, or you can't use them anymore.
See a snatch block and a shackle on their $4,000.
Yeah, that's those tow cables.
For the...
Where they replace the metal chains at the road lots that... With the, I guess, like... They're like safety cables that if they break, they won't hurt somebody.
They won't...
That won't be a recurring expense.
There are some recurring expenses, like you have to replace some of the vests from time to time because they get dirty. They tear gloves. It depends if we do, you know, if we are going to buy any kind of safety boots for the employees that may have had a pair worn out this year. We've talked about not doing that to try to save some money, except for new hires. Of course, we would have to give them the boot allowance. But most of these are... Most of the safety equipment's been purchased. But the big expense was the cable... The ropes that they're going to use to try to pull trees and stuff like that so that we don't have another accident.
Okay.
Anyone else have any other questions about this? If not, is there a motion to approve the bill payment list and any bills that are accrued prior to the check run?
There's only... There's only three power bills we haven't received yet, and we should probably get those in the mail today. Like I said, this is normally later than what we typically run the bill list because they're usually due out by the 25th. So like I said, there's only three power bills that's not on here, and they're small ones. We've got all the other bills in. So all the other telephone utility bills are on here.
A motion by Commissioner Booth. Is there a second? A second by Commissioner Robertson. Any other questions or discussions? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Robertson?
Yes.
Commissioner Tackett?
Yes.
Commissioner Booth?
Yes.
Judge Jones?
Yes. Next item is acknowledged, received the Treasurers' Financial Statement ending February 29, 2020. Is there a motion? A motion by Commissioner Booth. Is there a second? A second by Commissioner Tackett. Any other questions or discussions? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Robertson?
Yes.
Commissioner Tackett?
Yes.
Commissioner Booth?
Yes.
Judge Jones?
Yes. Next item is acknowledged, received the Sheriff and Clerks' 2550 report for February 2020. Is there a motion?
Motion.
A motion by Commissioner Tackett. Is there a second? A second by Commissioner Booth. Any other questions or discussions? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Robertson?
Yes.
Commissioner Tackett?
Yes.
Commissioner Booth?
Yes.
Judge Jones?
Yes. Next item is executive session. There is need, and I would ask Mr. King to please instruct the... Kevin, you can just probably go to that microphone right there and instruct the court on the relevant provisions of Kentucky Revice Statute prior to entertaining a motion.
Need a motion to vote under 61, 810, subsection C and F to discuss personnel and pending litigation.
Is there a motion entering to executive session?
Motion.
A motion by Commissioner Tackett. Is there a second? A second by Commissioner Booth. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Robertson?
Yes.
Commissioner Tackett?
Yes.
Commissioner Booth?
Yes.
Judge Jones?
Yes. We are in recess for executive session, and we'll return at the call of the chair. We'll call the court back to orders. A motion to adjourn for executive session?
Motion.
A motion by Commissioner Tackett. Is there a second?
Second.
A second by Commissioner Booth. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Robertson?
Yes.
Commissioner Tackett?
Yes.
Commissioner Booth?
Yes.
Judge Jones?
Yes. It is my motion that we move Steve Damrin from a temporary position as road... I'm sorry, solid waste supervisor. Is that District 4?
5.
District 5. And what's the rate of pay on that?
It's a 4A rate of pay.
With 4A rate of pay. Is there a second? A second by Commissioner Robertson. Any other questions or discussions? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Robertson?
Yes.
Commissioner Tackett?
Yes.
Commissioner Booth?
Yes.
Judge Jones?
Yes. We do have a tentative agreement based upon... To resolve the golf course litigation. Basically, it's a mess because of the prior transactions. We basically have an agreement to where each party will waive the claims they have against the other in a mutual release. Would there be a motion to allow me to execute basically a walkaway agreement whereas both parties would dismiss the claims that they have against each other?
Motion.
A motion by Commissioner Tackett. Is there a second?
Second.
A second by Commissioner Robertson. Any other questions or discussions? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Robertson?
Yes.
Commissioner Tackett?
Yes.
Commissioner Booth?
Yes.
Judge Jones?
Yes. Mr. King, you have your thing? Judge Hickman, your thing?
It occurred to me a while ago, Judge, while you were thanking folks from the solid waste department, that we've had tremendous cooperation from the road department as well. And we've asked folks to come out of their comfort zone and help with solid waste for last week and today in particular. And it is greatly appreciated, Judge. Without those guys' help, we would have been in not nearly as good a shape as we ended up in.
I think we had... And I apologize for not mentioning the road department for two reasons. One, they had a lot of damage over in the Pond Creek area last week. I was over there with Commissioner Booth and Mr. Little, the road supervisor, last week. They had a lot of damage. Some road... One or two roads were basically completely just washed out. And we had crews... This is something we've done different than in the past. We've brought crews in from other areas to make sure that we've got adequate manpower when we have something like that happen. I think we do have four employees from the road lots out working with solid waste today.
Yes, sir.
And again, thank you for reminding me of that. And we want to express our gratitude to all the folks in the road department as well.
You bet. Thanks.
All right. Commissioner Robertson, you have anything?
I just want to tell the citizens of Pike County, we're having a tough little battle right now, but we're going to get through it. And we appreciate everybody's help and understanding. And if they got any complaints, they can call. We'll try to help them with it. But we are having a hard time. And... But we'll get through it. Thank you.
Commissioner Tackett?
Judge, I just want to thank the people of this county and District 2 for giving me the opportunity to be in this seat. And as Commissioner Robertson said, we are... We're dealing with things that's never been dealt with in the history of Pike County, along this state and the nation. And, you know, just... We've got to stick together on this and Pike County and the state of Kentucky will come out stronger in the end. And just keep everybody in your prayers, and thank you all.
Commissioner Booth?
As you said, Judge, we had some flooding. We're still not caught up on everything that needs to be caught up. It's going to take some time. I do want to thank the other road crews that come over from Marbone and Robson Creek and helped us out. I really appreciate that. And most of all, like I said, let's just remember all the people in these times that we're having right now. Most of all, our healthcare workers, you know, our first responders, our police and all that has to be right on the front line with this, even from down from our solid waste or people works in the water and sewer. So I like to remember those and applaud them for everything that they do for being out on the front line. And just remember our country as a whole. That's all I have, Judge.
Thank you, Commissioner. We are facing some difficult times, but I think we're going to get through this. We just want to, again, thank everyone who is adhering to the CDC guidelines. We know that this is having a catastrophic impact on a lot of our businesses.